All right. Okay, it's four o'clock and we'll call this May 21st, 2024, Meeting of the planning Commission to Order. Daisy, can you tell the commission if we've met the requirements of the posting for the Kansas Open Meetings Act?
Yes, I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call.
Proceed to roll call. Commissioner Seidell.
Here.
Commissioner Van Coveren. Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Chair Mike Sell.
Here.
That would give us a attendance of seven out of our eight appointed members, and that is a quorum, and we've provided notice of today's public hearing, and we've also, in this case, sent notice out to all neighboring property owners that own property within 200 feet of this property. And so that would allow us to move forward with consideration of the minutes from your last week, last meeting on May 7th.
Okay. Hope you all had a chance to read the May 7th minutes. Is there any changes, or do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the minutes of the May 7, 2024 meeting.
Move in the second.
Move in the second and approve the minutes of the May 7, 2024 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None being heard, motion carries. Dean, new business.
Under new business, we have one public hearing item scheduled for your consideration, and that is both a conditional use permit application and an application for final site plan approval on a lot located in the Yost addition, which is located out at the southwest corner of I-135 and Waterwell Road. And Mr. Hirsch is going to present you the specifics of the application that's been presented to you.
Thank you. So the Yost addition was originally developed in 2003, and about a year ago, in August of 2023, the planning commission approved a replat for the lots that are at the southwest corner of the Waterwell Road and I-135 interchange. And the purpose of that replat was to create a developable lot for Bruckner Trucking, who is the applicant for this item. And what Bruckner would like to do is develop the site with a trucking, repair, service, and sales operation and facility. They primarily work in repairing trucks, selling trucks, and servicing them, and they feel that this particular corridor going into the airport off of Waterwell and the access off of 135 would be a good location for them, and so they've submitted a conditional use permit application for your review. In this case, your role is to review the site, the site plan, and what's being proposed, and to determine whether it is compatible with the surrounding area, and whether or not the site design, site plan layout is compatible with adjacent properties and the C-7 district requirements. So the C-7 is designed to accommodate service uses that are oriented towards highway use, and being close to the interchange, all of the properties in this area are Zone PC-7, the P standing for planning, meaning that in addition to reviewing the conditional use permit application, you'll also be reviewing the plan that's attached to it. When looking at the C-7 regulations, staff did determine that the proposed plan meets all of the bulk and development standards of the C-7 district. Let's see if I can move this bar here. The site plan that's proposed does have a few site plan items that will touch on that the applicant and staff have been talking about that need refining and revisions, and we'll talk about those briefly. The first is that the C-7 district requires that all maneuvering, parking, and driving aisles be paved, and one of the, one of the surfaces, surface materials that the original plan proposes would be an aggregate or milling-type surface, which would not be permitted in the C-7 district, and so the staff has been talking with the applicant, and they're going to work on revisions to have paving in the maneuvering areas that are to the east, north, and south of the building. There is a provision in code that allows for outdoor storage areas to have an all-weather surface that wouldn't necessarily have to be paved if there's a need for that. In that case, the all-weather surface or the storage area would have an all-weather surface of millings or gravel of some kind, and would be completely screened in with solid screening and fencing, but that's something that staff will talk to the applicant about, and they can clarify when they have a chance to speak here in a moment. And display areas, because they do have the sale of trucks and equipment, there are a few external display areas that are being proposed. One is on the south side of the south entrance, shown in the green hatched area, which I'll pull up a little higher on the screen so you can see it better. The other is off of Waterwell Road facing to the north, so there is a display area that would face traffic coming in off of, off of Waterwell Road. So those areas would also have to be paved. The second item that needs attention and revisions is the landscape plan. So the landscape regulations require that a certain number of tree units be provided in the front yard setback area. In this case, the subject property fronts, fronts three different roads. You have Yost Drive, which is what the property is accessed from to the west, then you have Waterwell Road to the north, and you have Interstate 135 to the, to the east. And so what that means is they would have landscaping along all three frontages, kind of evenly dispersed, in the front 25 feet. The plan is deficient in both the amount of landscape area that's being provided on those three frontages, as well as the number of tree units. And when staff and the applicant spoke earlier today, one of their concerns is the Yost addition, number two, has a number of easements along the street frontages. So there is a 20-foot easement along Waterwell Road and I-135, and the reason that that is important is because there's some overhead power lines in there that the applicant would rather not have landscaping in the front 25 feet and in that easement, in case the utility companies need to access that easement. They don't want the landscaping to be tore up, and they don't want any trees to get entangled in the overhead power lines. And so what we spoke about is working with the planning commission on approving a front yard setback area that may not be within the strict front yard, meaning the front 25 feet of the property, but might be set back a little bit. And so what that would look like is a plan in which there's landscaping along all three frontages, and it would meet the intent of providing a streetscape, if you will, but it would be set back a little bit further back than the 25-foot that you typically see, to make sure that the landscaping isn't in the easement and the trees don't get entangled in the overhead power lines. And so that would be something that the plan, that the applicant will request, that the planning commission consider on their behalf. Again, there's, there is landscaping, but it's primarily along Yost and the corner of Yost and Waterwell Road. Some landscaping areas, well, as tree units, will need to be added along I-135, as well as the eastern portion of Waterwell Road. And looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, staff does agree with the applicant that approval of the conditional use permit would allow the applicant to operate truck sales and service in the proposed location, and would contribute to the convenience of the public by providing local businesses, particularly those in the airport industrial area, with additional truck service and support, as well as truck drivers driving along Interstate 135. The proposed conditional use permit would also put a vacant undeveloped property into productive use, which could be viewed as a benefit to the community as well. And looking at injury to the surrounding property and dominance of the neighborhood, if we look at the surrounding neighborhood, what we'll see is that there are a few developments that have already occurred. One is Old Dominion Trucking to the south, which is also a trucking business. You also have the police firing range at the southwest corner of, of the Yost addition, and then you'll have Ashley Furniture Mart just across the street to, directly to the east. So there are three other developments in the neighborhood, and the Old Dominion Trucking specifically has similar, similar models in which they're using a lot of trucks and have a lot of truck travel going up and down Yost, as well as Waterwell Road. So the primary neighborhood impact associated with the proposed Bruckner's repair, sales, and service operation would be the frequency of large trucks, but that's going to be in line with some of the existing conditions that we see with Old Dominion there. To help mitigate some of the uses and quasi-industrial activities that take place on some of the other properties, Old Dominion moved most of their trucking activities to the east of their building or behind their building. Same thing with the police firing range, where they have most of their parking and activities back behind the building. Similarly, the applicant is proposing to have most of the trucking activities take place on the north, south, and east sides of the building, back behind the building frontage, to help mitigate the impacts of, of the trucking activities that are taking place with the facility. And looking at the building and how it's designed, it does have somewhat of a T shape to it, where it is 213 feet deep and about 144 feet north to south. The total square footage of the building is a little over 24,000 square feet. For context, what that looks like in the neighborhood is you have Old Dominion, who's got 7,800 square feet. You have the police shooting range and training center, that's a little less than 16,000 square feet, and then you have Ashley Furniture Mart that has almost 41,000 square feet. So it is, there is a wide range of kind of sizes of developments out here, and what's being proposed would be more than, than Old Dominion and the shooting range, but then quite a bit less than, than Ashley Furniture. The design of the building that's being proposed is primarily metal. There would be a number of bays on the north side of the building and a number of bays on the south side of the building, 12 in total, so basically six on each side, with additional bay on the south side for other uses, and those bays would be service bays for repairing and working on, on trucks that come into the, the business for assistance. The design of the exterior of the building is all metal paneling, primarily in industrial style vertical paneling. There is, there does appear to be a wainscoting on the, on the bottom seven feet or so that could be a different color than the metal finishing on the upper part. The total height of the building at its maximum peak is a little under 25 feet. There is a bump-out vestibule area right above the main entrance, where Bruckner's has their, their main signage, and that is the main entrance of the building. There are three windows on the west facade, which is the front facade. Here you can see the, the, the north facade, where you have a number of man doors, as well as the main entrance for service, and a few more windows and more bays. Here's the east elevation, and then you have the south elevation. So one of the things that staff would ask the applicant to confirm is the colors of the exterior, and whether or not the entire exterior would be metal vertical siding. And in looking at an example that they provided from Hayes, there does appear to be, where in Hayes, they had a charcoal wainscoting color with a white body above it, and then a, the vestibule would have a similar charcoal color to the, the wainscoting, and that's the drawing, the rendering of it, and here's the similar facility in Hayes picture that they provided, just to, to have context. So we would confirm with the applicant that that is, that is the same color scheme that they're proposing with this particular structure. Looking at the existing utilities, the site does have existing utilities throughout. When the Yost Drive was originally constructed and the original developments took place out here, there was a 24-inch water line that was extended. That 24-inch water line is sufficient and has a cost recovery fee of $1,698 per acre, plus any accrued interest since 2003. The sanitary sewer, there is a 12-inch line that was also part of that same project and has a cost recovery fee of $3,487 per acre. And so this is the water line, this is the sewer line, and then there is a drainage ditch burrow pit that was designed to detain water for the subdivision, and it was, it was created through a 2015 drainage study, so there is a capacity for stormwater drainage and retention in the area. One of the things that staff is working with the, the applicant on is a drainage analysis. We have received a grading plan. The grading plan depicts stormwater moving from, I'll pull it up here. Moving to the east primarily. So these arrows are showing the drainage movement, and so you'll see that most of the water is draining to the east, which is towards the I-135 right-of-way, and then there is some on the front of the building, the stormwater runoff on the front of the building would drain towards Yost. There is a green space that is being proposed that isn't really a detention area or retention area, but rather a pervious surface in which water would run towards and percolate into the ground as it surface flows into the I-135 right-of-way. We are going to work with engineering staff and the applicant to see if any additional water or stormwater detention is necessary, because we haven't quite got that far yet, but that's something that staff will work with the applicant on. Traffic access and parking. The proposed site plan has a 72-foot wide opening measured at the property line on the north entrance, and there's a south entrance of, with a 41-foot wide opening. And what we do is we measure the width of the curb cut and driveway at the property line, and, and it's, the limitation is 30 feet. What we've done in other cases, as you'll recall, is had engineers design a driveway curb cut that is 30 feet wide, but maybe has a wider radius, so that trucks can get in and out without their, their tires falling off to the side. And so what we would ask is that the applicant submit revised plans that meet that 30-foot width maximum, and, and possibly using a wider radius to accomplish all of those turning movements if necessary. There is a cost recovery for Yost Drive as well, and that is $6,019 per acre, plus accrued interest. The comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan was amended in 2013 to have, to show this area as part of the employment land use area, and since truck repairs, service, and sales are a conditional use in the C-7 district, there is no necessary amendments to the comp plan that would be needed for this application. On page 12 and 13, we did create kind of a brief summary of the deficiencies that are, we are working with the applicant on. The first is the curb cut, limitation of 30 feet. The second is making sure that all driving aisles, parking spaces, and maneuvering areas are fully paved. The third is making sure that we have sufficient landscape area along the three frontages, evenly distributed. The fourth is that those landscape areas along those three frontages have at least 38 tree units evenly distributed. The fifth is a drainage study being needed to complete the drainage plan. And then the sixth is specifying the exterior color. We do have that example that was done in Hayes and confirming that, that a charcoal wainscoting with a charcoal vestibule with the parapet in the front and a white body of the building is, is what they're proposing. And then just confirming that, that a sidewalk is needed along Yost Drive, and that the address of the property is 3615. And so to get through those particular items that staff has been working with the applicant on, we would recommend option number three, which is postpone consideration of the application if the commission wishes to review a drainage plan prior to taking action or additional information is needed, such as enhanced building elevation drawings, landscape planning plans, or additional information about truck traffic management being proposed. And so with that, staff would take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dustin. Questions for staff?
I have a question. On page seven, there was a, at the top, it's that calls out, "In total current landscape plan shows 3.67 tree units within the front yard landscaping areas." When I was looking at that, I don't know if you can pull the landscape plan back up. I just want to make sure I'm counting that correctly, because I wasn't getting the same number.
Yep. So here's where some of the confusion is, and I can understand the confusion, is we count for tree units, there's two, there's three different categories. There are shade trees, there are ornamental trees, and there are shrubs. Shrubs can account for up to a third of the total required tree units, so in this case, a third of, of 38 could be, of the 38 tree units could be shrubs. So when we look at the plan, we look at the front 25 feet, which is what the red line indicates here, and there's an ornamental tree here, there's a shade tree here, there's two ornamental trees here, another ornamental tree here, another ornamental tree there, and then you have one shade tree here. So by the strict application of landscape regulations, where you're measuring just the 25 feet, because of those easements that we talked about, and because of the overhead power lines that you see on the OU line here that you see, those proposed plantings aren't in the front 25 feet. And so what the applicant would request, and what staff would like to work with the applicant on, is allowing a deeper front yard landscape area, meaning coming back further from those three street frontages, and then taking some of these tree units and, and evenly distribute them along the three frontages. And some of those trees down here can be reallocated to the, the street frontages as well. So these don't necessarily have to be here on the south side, so those trees can be reallocated towards one of the, the street frontages if they want. And because they have a display area up in this area along Waterwell, they can mix in maybe some ornamentals in that area or some shrubs, and move the shade trees kind of to the sides, if you will, of that display area. So you have a display area here, shade trees here, and shade trees along I-135 and the rest of Waterwell Road, where they're not displaying their vehicles and equipment.
Was there a recommended distance that we, from 25, or is that kind of up to?
I think, I think in this case, it would, I think, 25 feet behind, so I would say like 50 feet.
50, okay. I mean, that's kind of the number I was gravitating to.
I mean, I think if you have trees within 50 feet of the property line, it would still serve a lot of the intent we're trying to accomplish with having that street frontage vegetation.
Dustin, thinking about Foley Equipment out there and their display area that's along the I-70 frontage, what is the material under there? Is that paved, or is it gravel?
So their display areas, I believe, are all paved, if I remember right, but I'm going off memory. They do have, I think they do have some storage area back behind. They are I-2, they're not the same zoning district, but I do think the display areas are paved, if I remember correctly.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions to staff?
A question on the landscape. What dictates the number of trees and that sort of thing? Is, is there any wiggle room on that?
So it's a formula, and it's based on the size of the site, as well as street frontage. And one of the things that this property has that's unique is it has three, three street frontages, and that, that does make it a little bit unique, but it is also quite large, so spreading out those tree units along those three frontages, I think, is very doable.
Well, this seems to me, the ones on the I-35, because that's set up high, you're really not even going to see those. And then I was looking at Ashley, they have 18 tall shrub-type trees there, or whatever you want to call them. Five of those are dead. Those things usually don't have much of a chance to, to survive in our climate, it seems like, but I just was wondering if there's any wiggle room on that.
So for context, the Old Dominion site had a similar situation, because they're also up against I-135, as well as Mr. Augustine and everyone else that's developed since 1994, in which we've always required landscaping along the interstate, if you, if you locate along the interstate, because we, it's, it's considered a street frontage, even though it may not have direct access. We do count it towards the sign, sign allowances for sign purposes, and, because it's a street frontage, and then we also require that it be landscaped. So Old Dominion, they have a number of trees that were installed along I-135. I haven't been out there lately to take an inventory to see how well they're doing in terms of, of their growth and vitality, but that, that was required of them as well. So this would not be unique to require landscaping along that frontage.
Any further questions to staff?
I would note that a couple of things that had been done. One, in the case of Foley Equipment, as opposed to just having a evenly spaced landscaping along I-70, they actually had the display area, and then they used landscaping to frame either side of the display area, so it doesn't make sense to put trees or shrubs or anything in front of your display area where you're trying to display, so working towards framing any kind of display area. The other thing that's been done by the planning commission before, particularly along South Knight Street in front of Lowe's, where we have overhead powers, power lines, is that the planning commission has allowed ornamental trees to be substituted for shade trees when we have overhead power lines at a rate of one, one-to-one, because it's not, it's preferable to have low-growing ornamental trees as opposed to shade trees growing up into any area that has overhead wires, as I'm sure Mr. Seidell would agree. So the, the situation with that is that our code says if you have ornamentals instead of shade trees, you have to provide three ornamental trees for every shade tree. However, the planning commission has precedent for allowing ornamental trees to be substituted for shade trees at the same ratio where we have overhead power. So that is something that lies within your discretion to, to say that you can provide the same number of trees, but we prefer them to be ornamental where we have overhead power lines.
Personally, I feel confident that we could direct the staff to work with the applicant if the applicant is, we're going to hear from you in a minute, but if the applicant is so moved that, that we could go ahead and, and do this without the, having a firm commitment on the, on the landscape portion of it. Dustin, is there, is there one particular part of this application that you are concerned about, like maybe the drainage study or something that you want to postpone?
Yeah, I think, I think given, given that we have some questions about the drainage still, and then the landscaping, that having a plan come back that you're able to review and approve, so that everybody's on the same page and everybody- and approve so that everybody's on the same page and everybody understands the expectations of the development and what is required and not is advantageous to all parties, just so that everybody knows this is the plan that the Planning Commission approved versus this is staff's interpretation of what the Planning Commission wanted is always helpful.
The other aspect of this is that it is in a planned district, and so the expectation in a planned district is that the final site plan serves as the building permit plan. So in other words, when the Planning Commission approved the plans for the Foley Equipment facility out on North Ohio, basically, the plans that the Planning Commission reviewed and approved were what was submitted for the building permit. And so the expectation in a development like this is that we would have plans to use that essentially addressed every issue that would allow a building permit to be issued based on the plans that the Planning Commission reviewed. And so we're, we're not feeling that we're there yet in writing a staff report where we don't know whether an area that's set aside in the southeast corner is a detention pond or not, we don't feel is adequate information to take final action on.
Thank you.
One more, one more question. So, so there is space, this isn't going to back up to Old Dominion, is it? There's still space between Old Dominion and the south side of Bruckner's proposed property, right?
Right, so when the previous owners of the property, the Bradley Trust, came forward with the replat in August of twenty-three of last year for your review, one of the primary purpose of that is to have a lot be retained as undeveloped to be developed at a future time. So that is correct, where Bruckner is only going to be developing Lot One to the north, and that the Lot Two area would remain undeveloped.
Okay. Would the applicant care to address the commission? Your name and address for the record and?
My name is Drew Terrell. I'm the Facilities Project Manager from Bruckner's. My address, do you want local address, where I live at home, Bruckner's address?
Yeah, you could just use the Bruckner's address.
Yeah.
Sixteen forty-five Copper Court.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate you letting us be here. We have gone through this, and as Dustin mentioned, we've already been on the phone with him earlier today, trying to get some clarification on some things. A couple of things that I'd like to just point out for all of your clarification. Of these eight things, as they were written, the first one, the driveway curb cuts, by design of all of our properties, our intention is to get the truck traffic off of the city street as quickly and safely as possible. And so that's what we've done other places. If the thirty-foot curb cut is the limit for this particular area, then we can work with that. And we've already talked with Dustin about putting us in touch with the city engineer to potentially see if a forty-foot design would be better in this location. So the clarification we wanted on the parking area, particularly in the back of the location, is in most of our areas, we consider that to be storage. And by definition, if we had the screened fence, we wouldn't necessarily need to pave or concrete that. Now that we have that clarification, we'll plan forward to, most likely, we will end up paving it, but we appreciate the option of either doing a screened fence or paving it. So we'll look forward on that. The, a lot of conversation about the landscaping, there's two items specifically on the landscaping. And one thing that I'd like to point out, can we put the landscaping picture back up, possibly? Is, Nick Nemeczek is our architect out of Garden City. He's actually online with us now as well. And the thing that I think bears pointing out is that we followed the calculations on the formulas. So what you see drawn here, and if you scroll out to see the whole picture, is nineteen thousand square foot, the same calculated number of square footage for landscaping, and it's the same number of trees. But when you measure it from twenty-five feet from the frontages and it's not evenly distributed, so we don't have any pushback on the amount of landscaping we want to do. We just need to make sure that we have clear guidance on where it goes.
You think you can get along with these guys?
We're doing our very best.
Okay.
And so the, as you can kind of see with the red lines, from our landscape architect, the two pieces of guidance we had here is the utility easements. And as we talked about, you know, we can put ornamental trees underneath the power lines if that's what we're told to do, and we sure will. The challenge there is that if anything ever happens to those power lines, they're going to get taken down. So we were hoping that maybe a better, you know, distribution. The trees that we have there along the south side, that's actually been done in the other locations. There's trees along the side of the fence of the police training facility like that, and they don't have quite as many trees as this up front. Of course, I don't know how big their lot is, so I can't, I'm not, but just as a comparison. And then there are trees down along beside, between the Old Dominion and the state there as well. So, you know, if something like this works, we, you know, with some flexibility from you all, we would like that a lot. It seems to make, you know, a little more practical sense. But if we, if we need to, you know, and if we need to get something out along I-35, and I'll get it into that green space area in just a second, but just sticking with, as they were numbered here. So those are the two issues on the landscape. On the drainage, during our pre-design meeting, we worked with folks, and I apologize, I was not part of that. Nick Nemeczek can speak directly to it. But we got the minutes from the pre-design meeting, pre-development meeting, and then asked some clarification questions. We got it written via email that we don't need a drainage study done for the property because that was evidently addressed as part of the overall development.
We'll need to get that in writing from the city engineer because the plat that was approved for this property specifically required that a drainage study be submitted as part of any building permit supplemental, and that was included in the replat as a condition of creating this lot.
Okay. I'll lean on Nick and?
Yeah, Drew, I can jump in there. We, we have no problem doing a drainage study. We have all the calculations. It's just, if we're trying to make in two weeks the next meeting, that's, we'll, I'll just have to get on my civil engineer and see if we can get it done. But yeah, I mean, we weren't trying to not do the drainage study, we were directed not to, but we do have calculations to show all the water runoff and how we got to that. So we can issue that if that's what is required, so no problem on that.
Okay, thank you. Next couple of these, maybe just a little bit of confusion, but the elevations with the colors of the building, they were stated as charcoal gray and polar white. It actually even says that in the report later on in there, so I'm not sure what that was. And then a sidewalk walk along the front, there's sidewalk, sidewalk is drawn there as well. And then we made a typographical error when we filled out the application on the address. All the plans and all the documents have the correct address. It was just the one field on the application that we fat fingered there, so.
Actually, all the plans say thirty-one sixty-five, and they don't say thirty-six fifteen. Not just the application, every plan sheet says thirty-one sixty-five Yost Drive.
We've already, we've already made all these changes, it's done, so they will be correct.
That never happens to me.
I'm sorry.
Can you guys give me an idea, a feel for what the timeline is for this project? I know we've, Bruckner's has brought an application before the commission here before, on a site that didn't choose to build on, and I just want to get a feel for what your timeline is.
We own the property. We have the metal, pre-engineered metal building is purchased. We, our contractor, same contractor that we're using in the final stages in Garden City is ready to mobilize. So we, Adam is the local GM. I told him by the end of the month, but based on the way this is going, that might not work out.
So do you think you can work with staff and get all these things handled by the next meeting?
The, on our end, I've got our civil engineer, our landscape architect, and Nick committed that we can do that. We'll need some help from the city engineer and, you know, clear guidance, but yes, I think so. And as I've tried to, you know, sort of reiterate, we don't, we're not pushing back on any of the requirements, we're just making sure we're clear on what they are.
Sure, sure. And Dustin, does that, if we make this in the first June meeting, is that something that you guys can get handled on your side?
Right, so when we talked to the applicant earlier today about some of these things, I think most of them are very doable in terms of fixing. One thing that maybe no one in this room really has a full grasp on is the drainage plan. Since that's going to be done by people that aren't here and reviewed by people that aren't here, that would be the only concern with that is whether or not that piece of this project can be completed in that time. But other than that, I think June fourth is very doable in terms of a postponement date, but I don't know what Drew and Nick feel about the drainage piece, if they'd rather request the next meeting. It's kind of up to them. So when you make a postponement, you all need to postpone it to a specific date, so we want to figure that out.
Nick, does that give you enough time to get your end together?
We're going to make it be enough time.
Okay.
Very good.
Very good.
I have a question on the curb cut. It may be shocking to somebody, but I drive a semi for a farmer west of town for wheat and fall harvest, and I know how nice it is to have a wider curb cut than narrow. Once again, is a thirty-foot, is there a wiggle room on that to allow that or to make it forty or not?
Right, so.
We went through this discussion with the Augustine addition out on South Ninth Street, and the secret for making trucks and semi turns is the radius area. And so like out there on South Ninth in front of Mr. Augustine's development where he talked about doing a convenience store, the curb cut at the curb is thirty feet, but you can put a very sweeping, large radius out in the right of way to make that turn as easy as possible by widening out your radiuses. There's no, there's no limit on how wide your radius is at the curb line. It's where, it's at the throat of the driveway, and when you get beyond thirty feet, then you have to start looking at whether you're striping lanes or dividing it, and people don't know if it's two lanes out or two lanes in once you get above that thirty feet. So the thirty feet is the driveway measured at the property line, but there's no limitation on designing a radius that is more truck-friendly to help facilitate those turning movements.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification question there? When you're talking about radius, so obviously, as this picture shows, you can fan that out as far as you want, but as far as the actual drive space, it's limited by the distance from the property line to the road, isn't it? Am I saying that correctly?
It depends, there's, it can vary what the distance is between the property line and the curb line. In this case, South Ninth Street has a very generous right of way, so there's more space between the property line and the curb line for that radius to taper. On Yost Drive, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen, fourteen feet.
Right, so we're still limited on the, even though we can make that as wide as we want, functionally, the radius is still going to be the thirteen or fourteen feet from the?
It's still going to be within that space between the curb line and the property line. And again, there is, it's not, it's not clear to us whether these are just regular chassis trucks or everything is done as semis, but if you can demonstrate that you're trying to accommodate semi trucks, that that is your, that is your market that you're serving, you can work with the city engineer on widening that to forty feet at the property line. But that's not going to change the distance between the property line and the curb line in terms of any radius.
And does this group have any flexibility on the maximum of forty feet?
The forty is the maximum that's allowed in the code for, we have truck stops and we have Kubota plants, and we have, this is actually the Kubota plant, and they have a thirty-foot wide driveway.
The other thing I hope that they would take into consideration when considering a forty-foot cut would be also that this is a, what, a twenty-five-foot roadway, Dustin, or thirty?
Yost Drive is thirty-three feet wide.
So, and Ninth Street is obviously a lot more space than that, so, anyway. Work with these guys and get that all?
We can work with them. We have facilities all over the country and?
Great.
If, we'll take whatever we can get, but?
Okay.
Everybody will be in, you know, anybody driving down that road will be in better shape if we can get it wider.
Okay. Any further questions to the applicant? All right, thank you. Anybody from the audience like to comment on this application? No? You have a big chance. Okay, any, do we have anybody online?
The only person we have online is the architect, Nick, who has spoken, and if he has any final words to say, we could hear from him.
Yeah, Nick, do you have any questions for us or for staff?
No, we will get on this right away. Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion to postpone this to the June fourth meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to postpone this decision to our next meeting, which the date is June fourth, twenty twenty-four.
And a second?
Second.
Move in a second to move application CU twenty-four dash three to the June fourth meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Thank you. Dean? Other matters or legislative matters, I guess?
We have no legislative matters for your consideration this afternoon, and no administrative or preliminary discussion items to bring before the commission.
Okay. Public forum. And again, anybody, big chance.
We do not have anyone online.
Okay, well, going to have to increase our audience base, I guess. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
In a second? Move in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, we are adjourned.